I shall call this meeting to order. Please stand. You'd like to believe it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have roll call, please, Stacy.
Congressman Crells?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Once again, we shall start with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. Welcome, everybody. Rick, glad to have you here. This quote is from General George S. Patton in the spirit of memorial day, I guess. Never tell anyone how to do things. Tell them what to do, and they will surprise you with their ingenuity. Okay, uh, we do have, uh, in addition to, uh, for tonight's agenda before I ask the council to approve, and that's, uh, item C, under ordinances and resolutions, we're gonna have to call for a special, I'm calling for a special meeting to set a public hearing for June eighteenth to address the public hearing for Vacating Hall Drive. So I will need a motion from the council to approve setting that meeting for June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. That's just gonna help us speed things on along as much as we can here.
I will move on that motion to add a special meeting for June eighteenth for Vacating Hall Drive. So what is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Give it a motion?
I'll second.
Second, very exact, thank you. Yeah, first and a second, I guess we'll just, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So that'll be on the eighteenth then, a special meeting for that, great. Uh, are there any other additions or corrections from the council? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I will move to approve tonight's agenda, is with that addition of ordinance and resolution number three, letter C.
I'll second.
Okay, a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to the citizens' comments portion of the meeting, tonight we have, uh, Rick Shera, uh, invited guest. He's represents West Central Initiative, and he's gonna give us a presentation, so, Rick, come on. Come on up to the mic and right up to the mic to introduce yourself for the people in the audience and, 'cause this is being recorded, of course.
Well, Rick Shera, I'm with West Central Initiative, have been there about six years, seven years. Before that, I worked with Deeds, I was down here in Morris quite a bit, working with your employers, trying to help with workforce issues and that, but thank you for, uh, your honor and council. Thank you for having us here, uh, again this year. I've been here, what, probably a couple of years ago, I think, it was, uh, and I think we got into fishing talk, is that, Jeff, was it? Sorry about that fishing, but anyway, I'll just go through the packet here quick, and then what I want to do is maybe save some time at the end if you have questions and that, and, uh, I'll, uh, in the back on the left-hand side is our annual review, and in the back of that review, it's kind of a fun, uh, page. We have our donors, which you guys are, uh, part of our donors for cities, but then at the glance, there's some just fun numbers, and we'll talk about some other numbers here locally, more, uh, targeted to Stevens County and the city of Morris. Uh, but there's, uh, loans and stuff, twenty twenty-three, one point five million in loans, eleven million leveraged out in, in a lot of different ways. Uh, so we do have an economic, uh, benefit to our region that, um, is good. Also on the left is kind of our, our, we had a sheet printout of, uh, the numbers, and I won't go through the numbers, but, uh, grants, two point one million, two point nine million loans, and you see there's some other, uh, different assets and loans, and some of the projects and our representatives here representing Stevens County are on there too. And we do have those community funds, Chicaio, we've got the Hancock School Fund, Morris Public Library Foundation. These are component funds that we manage for, uh, communities in our region, uh, over two hundred of those in the nine counties. On the right-hand side, uh, let's go way in the back, there, it's the rural democracy handout. Uh, this is a project that started about a year ago or so, where we, uh, research told us that people weren't stepping up to be, uh, to run for office or be involved in their communities, so we looked at some of the statistics saying, uh, I think Stevens, what, one in nine people have to step up, or you've probably heard some of those stats we've had, we've been talking about that for a while, and our, uh, Fergus Falls Mayor Ben Shire's been talking about, uh, some of the things you've done where you put solar on your public buildings, and there's, um, and there's resources made to tap into federal state dollars to maybe help our community, so we wanna make sure we're on the cutting edge of that. That's, uh, but the rural democracy is leadership. I know there was a headline, and I'm gonna forget the town now, near Alec, where they didn't have a mayor after election. So what happens if you don't have someone stepping up, and, and I've been to some city council meetings, one year I went to about twenty-five of them, uh, and there were some that, I was probably the youngest one in the room, so we did, next generation leadership. If we can help, uh, promote that, or make them feel comfortable stepping up and running and being part of the community. That's, uh, that's what the rural democracy is all about. Loan programs, of course, you, you're familiar with loan programs, and you have your economic development folks we work with here. And the financial institutions, when people, uh, look to, um, start a business or get financing for a business, we can be part of that equation. Uh, we are on a, sort of, a start a ripple campaign, uh, Mayor, I believe you came to that?
Yep.
We had one here in, in your, uh, the Hudson Inn, kind of an introduction again of what West Central is, and that's a, uh, we're trying to raise some funds to do some, uh, work in here, you can see what, uh, focus areas we got going here on that. We'll be back here on June twelfth, so in a couple of weeks, here at the University of Minnesota, Morris. This is called Seventeen Rooms, and I, I always like to say what this is, is kind of community building, because it takes all facets of a community, everything from groundwater to infrastructure, to education, to, uh, poverty, hunger, all these facets of a community, and you go, you separate and work on those little things for about an hour and a half or so, and you get to back together. It's a, it's, we got about a hundred and eighty people signed up right now, so if you're not, you wanna take a day off on the twelfth, we're taking applications still through the end of the month. And then they told me too, that, uh, if you, if you're, can't make up your mind till the seventh, eighth of June, go ahead and sign up, so.
That's a Wednesday.
We'll take walk-ins.
That's a Wednesday, that's where everybody knows the twelfth.
Wednesday, June twelfth.
I know, I'm signed up for it.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's a, it's experiment, and it's been done in other places around the world, a couple places around the country, and, uh, we're gonna give it a shot here, and I, I think it's just, you know, how can we help our communities, uh, thrive, and come up with some, uh, both long-term and short-term, uh, solutions? Maybe not solutions, I think it's just tactics or ways of getting things done. And finally, a, a little regional development organization, this is a little handout, I think you've probably seen this if you've been on the council before. Uh, and this is about the story, it's a really easy read for about five minutes, but it tells a story about how we became the Economic Development Organization for the region, what happened there. And you see on the top are the, uh, the Economic Development Organizations, Minnesota Association of Development Organizations. The Initiative Foundations at the bottom, we're the only one has the same footprint, and we're the only nonprofit, uh, association, uh, development organization. So, that's, uh, to help tap into some federal state funding for the region. A couple, one other point, um, we always have, uh, some handouts of things we've done here in, uh, funding requests, funding requests from January first, twenty twenty-three to, uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, so pretty recent. And, um, in Stevens County, uh, we've had grants, um, oh, uh, well, it was big numbers, so this, it's like nine hundred and thirty, thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, nine hundred, nine hundred and thirty thousand, right? Almost a million dollars in funding for Stevens County, and actually, it's over that, we look at the component funds and the monies that we, uh, that your component funds, uh, give back to your community. So, that's, uh, appreciate your support on, uh, uh, in, in the work we do.
You know, I found it really interesting, I went to the, the, uh, start a ripple, as you mentioned, and, and talking to Roger McCann, and he was talking about, he brought us back, you know, he got up and talked about the history of how this whole thing started. And you look at what it started with, you know, working basically out of a little basement up at Fergus Falls, he had no support people, really nothing.
Yeah.
And now you look at what the, it has been kind of grown out of that, it's really amazing. And I just wanna say it's, it's really helped, your efforts have really helped, and, you know, a lot of businesses are out here can attest to that. You know, they, they probably wouldn't have a business if it wasn't for some of that gap financing and stuff that you do.
It's fun to hear those things, I went to Osakis, and the Osakis Hardware Store, and the lady walks up to me and says, and, you know, I didn't know her, but she said, you know, thirty years ago, we, everything we had owned, we, it was to buy this, uh, hardware store, and we were still short, and West Central said, here, we'll help out, and she says, if it weren't for you, now that they've run that hardware store, and a small-town hardware store is important, you, you know, you've, you've had them, you have them here.
Any questions for Rick from the council?
Always appreciate your support, and, uh, hopefully we'll see you on the twelfth, I'll be there. I'm kind of a runner, 'cause I've said, I'll, I'll just fill in wherever needed, but, uh, please say hello if you see me in the, see me in the crowd. Introduce yourself if I, if I don't have a meeting.
Well, thanks for coming by, I appreciate it.
Yep. I usually like to stay, but I think I've been on the road, I had, actually, it was, I had to go to Wilmer earlier this morning for a funeral, so I've been on the road for quite a while.
Yeah.
But, uh, appreciate it.
Yep.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Rick, appreciate it. Okay, we have, uh, moving on, we have no public hearings, so we will move on with reading and approval of the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
I will move approval of the regular meeting minutes for May fourteenth.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the May fourteenth regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have the condensed version for the paper from five fourteen, twenty twenty-four. Meeting minutes, I guess.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes from the five fourteen, twenty-four meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We shall signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. All right, we can move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, the April tenth, twenty twenty-four library board minutes, the gambling report, raffle license report, and then several, uh, we'll get two months where the park, pork board minutes there from April tenth and May fifteenth. I guess I can move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent agenda, I will bring it back to the council for discussion. If there's any items you'd like to discuss, now's a good time.
You see that there was a discussion about, um, Tony giving, providing Russ a copy of the weekly community ed schedule back in April? Has that been happening?
Yeah.
'Cause that sounds like a good fantastic idea.
Yep.
Perfect. Much easier to plan for perk stuff, maintenance and that, when you know what's going on.
I was reading through the park board minutes, and I see, uh, they're trying to raise some funds, and I just wanted to give a shout out, shout out to Haley Karas, sounds like she's heading up a fundraising effort to try to raise money for that, uh, putting a, the Riverside Park, which is that?
Out where they live.
Out where?
Karas's, isn't it?
Yep, yep.
Holding that petition up there, okay.
Between Palm, um, Palm Beach River.
They're estimating that cost to be about ten grand, huh?
Yep, and they've already secured those, so.
Secured a lot of it?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to give a shout out to her for, for her efforts, that's, that's great. Okay. Any other items on the consent agenda anybody would like to speak to? Hearing none, we had a motion and a second. I will ask, uh, all those in favor of the items on the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We shall move on to petitions, requests, and communications. First, one before us is accepting a donation to the fire department.
That's always a nice gesture when somebody donates to their fire department, so I'll, I'll move for acceptance of the donation to the fire department from Central Specialties.
Yeah, it's in the amount of a hundred dollars from Central Specialties, Inc. Now, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, we have a motion next, uh, and a second to accept the donation from Central Specialties, Inc. in the amount of a hundred dollars to go to the fire department, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is an application for exempt permit from the Assumption Church.
I will move approval for the, uh, application for an exempt permit for Assumption Church.
I'll second.
Okay. I think this, is that one for September Fest already? No?
No, I don't think so.
It's actually, I think, for their Playhouse Raffle, but I think she has the wrong date on the form, so it was a reminder when she picks it up to change that to twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so that's for the raffle, okay. All right, so we had a first and a second to approve that. All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the next petition and request before us is an approval of growler license for Danham Hospitality.
I assume this is basically just their next step in procuring their?
Yep.
License for that, so, um, with that, I will move approval of the growler license for Danham Hospitality.
I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Sell on. All right, now we have ordinances and resolutions. Uh, the first resolution before us is a resolution authorizing fund transfers. Becca, do you wanna speak to that maybe, perhaps a bit?
Yeah, I can just speak up, it's.
You can?
It's your, you're the resolution you see each year, authorizing permission for us to transfer money between funds that you approved during the budget process. So we usually wait till the audit's done to not complicate the funds anymore, and then we always get permission to transfer funds from you guys.
Okay. Any questions for Whitney on that?
So then this goes like on next year's audit, or whatever, twenty twenty?
Yep, it'll be twenty twenty-four activity.
Okay.
I'll move approval of resolution authorizing fund transfers.
I will second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to, uh, approve the resolution authorizing fund transfers. Uh, I will ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please, Stacy.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Crells?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, next up is, uh, the first reading of ordinance number one twenty-three, an ordinance vacating certain public right-of-way of Hall Drive. And we've had some discussion, uh, about this already, so, uh, is there any questions, uh, anybody would like to throw out there before we entertain a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Um.
No.
Say no.
Sure, I guess.
My transit brain just wants to know where Hall Drive is, it's not logged in my map.
Oh, just, just south of Bonanza Bean, there's a little, it's just a little strip of grass, probably about as wide as this room.
Sure.
And about a half mile wide.
Thank you.
So it's, not surprising you wouldn't know where it is, 'cause it's just grass.
And that's considered a road? Just grass?
They plotted, they bought it, oh, we've had for twenty-five years, and I think. Yep. I think the intent back twenty-five years ago was that maybe someday we might have an opportunity to develop on there, but it appears that opportunity has came and went, so.
Well, businesses are developed.
Businesses are still there, right, as far as us. I guess having that road for development is probably not gonna happen, but, okay. Any other discussion on vacating that, or on that ordinance, rather? Everybody knows where it is, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, have we got a motion yet on that, Mayor?
Nope, we're still waiting.
I'll make a motion approving the reading of ordinance number one twenty-three, an ordinance vacating certain public right-of-way.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance number one twenty-three, an ordinance vacating certain public right-of-way of Hall Drive. And I will ask for a roll call vote on that ordinance, please.
And you're setting your second reading for?
Yes. Second reading is set for June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
June eighteen, we already vote, did we already vote on that?
We, we.
We have not, that's the next item.
I've added it to the agenda number, it's next up, yep.
Uh, councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Bellixon?
Yes.
Crells?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. And now we have the added item that we talked about at the beginning of the meeting to the agenda, that's just calling for a special meeting, uh, setting that public hearing for June eighteenth. So we have to, uh, and that'll be addressing again the Vacating Hall Drive, so we'll just need a motion and a second on that one.
I'll make a motion, uh, calling a special meeting for June eighteenth.
I will second.
All right, we have a first and a second on that, and then is that, well, that'll probably pretty much be the only business we'll conduct that night then? Just specifically for that, so it'll be short and sweet, okay. All right, so we have a first and a second, uh, calling for that special meeting on June eighteenth, addressing the Vacating Hall Drive. And now I'll ask for a roll call vote on that, please, Stacy.
Councilmember Bellixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Crells?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, just clicking right along here, we shall move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Um, we'll start with the park board, the park board met, uh, May fifteenth. Um, the last few months, we've been talking about getting Narcan in the AED machines at the park. Um, the school decided to put them in their AED machines at the school. Um, so for those of you who don't know, Narcan is a safe-to-use nasal spray that's used to revive someone during an overdose from any prescription pain medications or street, street drugs such as heroin. Um, so we, um, we're asking that we, uh, either have a motion or consensus that, um, it's all right for us to put the Narcan in the parks and those AED machines. And if none of you, um, know, or if you remember, if you open them, it'll make a, a buzzing noise, so if someone knows there's an emergency.
Is there an expiration date on Narcan that who's, that somebody has to monitor and make sure that we're not?
You know, I'm.
Or if it gets used?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I know that Tony said that he is the one that's gonna collect them.
And it's temperature sensitive, I believe, so having it probably there during the summer, or spring, summer, fall, that I would think it probably would get collected at the end of the year, but I know it's been talked about at some of the park board meetings on just some of those, but.
And that's a nasal spray, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
You know, I think it's probably, I guess my thoughts on it, if it helps save a life, I think it's probably a pretty good deal. We can figure out a way to keep it fresh, safe, and all that good stuff. Is there any training involved in using it, or is it?
It didn't sound like it.
I think it's pretty simple.
From all they've said, it was, you know, it's better to have it and to have someone utilize it, 'cause it's safe, so even if they used it and it wasn't for an overdose, whoever they used it on would be fine.
Okay.
Um.
Do we have any issues at any of the parks, just the general question of whether it be tampering or, or someone monkeying with any of the AED boxes as a whole?
So that is what I asked, and, and that's where the alarm sounds, when you open it up. And so that kind of deters those who are just doing it to monkey around, but that was, that was one of the questions I had.
It's a loud alarm, one of the people on the park board that lives up by Eagles Ball Park had said that that one they got opened up out there, and they could hear it at their house, which is quite a ways from where the, the box is by the bathrooms there at the Eagles Park, so.
And then somebody just has to call and report that, or does it go, the alarm go to?
It doesn't trigger to anywhere, it's just a sound alarm in the vicinity that somebody would hear and probably, if you're people out there. Yeah, as the mayor said, I'd rather have it than not need it than to need it and not have it, I, if it's no cost to us and it's in the AED box and.
And this goes in all the parks? Does all the parks have all AED, or just?
I'm not sure, but I would believe it would go in the ones that are in wherever we have the AEDs out in the parks.
Yeah, I don't know, I think it sounds, sounds reasonable, like a reasonable request, probably, hopefully we won't have to ever use it, but.
Yeah, not opposed to it at all, my, my biggest, I don't wanna say concern, but question is like making sure that it's good, so if there is an emergency, that it's not.
Well, I can, I can look into it more, I mean, when we have our, 'cause the park board is wanting to do a trip with you guys through all the parks on June eleventh, so maybe we wait and have that discussion after we go through all the parks, and I can get some more information on the expiration date and how long it's good for, and.
You could just set that up then as a, under petitions request, probably, in our next, at our next meeting then?
Well, prob-
Or would that be in a?
It could, if I have the information that rises, if you wanted to see where they would be, we could wait until after the eleventh, your choice.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe just table it for now until
Mm-hmm.
we, uh, get more information then.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
And so like I said, if it works for everyone, um, we'll plan on June eleventh, probably about six o'clock to take off and look at all the parks. So after our regular meeting, we'll just go to the parks and take a look at all the parks and see what the park board is, um, kind of planning and thinking.
Sounds good.
Um, working on getting our budget documents kind of prepared and looking at, so that time of year again where we're, um, where we're starting the budget process, by the first meeting in July, um, you'll have a city manager budget guidance. Carolina is our new, um, administrative secretary, so, um, she just started today, it's her first day, so, uh.
How about that?
And does it feel like a Monday to you, too?
Yes. Yeah, so we're very excited. Uh, we're still working our, on our compensation study, so we have. Uh, we're still working our, on our compensation study, so we have about half our job descriptions done. And we've heard back from about thirty percent of the cities that we reached out to, to get our comparables from, so. Um, moving along, uh, one of the reasons why we're doing this is it was talked about in negotiations last year. Um, we only had that one-year, um, union contract, so I'm sure by, um, June-ish, we'll be getting a letter from the unions wanting to start negotiations again. So hoping we can make it more than a year long this time with, with looking at some of these comparables. Uh, the legislate, legislative session ended May nineteenth. Um, so June third, there'll be a webinar with the Cleveland Minnesota Cities Code, kind of discussing the end of it and how, how it affects us. Um, some of the big things to note, um, very concerned about that missing middle housing bill. Um, none of the language in there was passed, so that's, um, good for us. There was no bonding bill passed. We didn't have any infrastructure asked dollars for that, but that's a big one for cities. We really, um, need that bonding bill. Uh, so unless they do a special one, uh, it'll be probably two years before they look at a bonding bill again. Um, the local sales tax general authority proposal was not passed. There's still that moratorium if we ever wanted to look at a local sales tax for, I think, another year now. They did pass a bill making changes to the cannabis regulatory structure. Um, as we go through this, if we decide we want to have a municipal cannabis store, we will have to follow all the processes and, um, and get a license from the state like everyone else. Plus, then that would not count towards how many numbers that we, if we said that there's only one in our county that couldn't, you know, we wouldn't count towards that number if we didn't want to.
Is there a timeframe on that, Becca, that we would have to let the state know if we are in or out of that business?
Didn't say. They're still working on a lot of that.
Okay.
Um, those sales can start next year, but we're, yeah, it's still a lot of moving pieces with that.
Okay.
The EMS bill did pass, um, but with obviously changes than what they were hoping for. So there's a pilot program that's set up, um, with twenty-four million dollars in emergency aid for real ambulance services, which is way less than the one hundred and twenty million that was asked for. So hopefully they'll see, um, the need with this pilot program, um, and do a little bit more the next session.
That is really disappointing.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, I, I, I think we're all aware of what the challenges are out here and it's just too bad that somehow we're not getting the message through.
Yeah.
I don't know, hope these, hope people can hang on, cause I mean, it's gotten to that point, I think, with some of these, um, services out there that unless they're, they may not be able to sustain.
Right, right. And then housing, we've been working a lot. Becky, Cheryl, Jessica and I, um, are continuing to, to look at how we can expand our housing stock. Um, looking into different grants, uh, for housing dollars. Um, one of the big things that, that we are continuously talking about and trying to figure out first is kind of where we, what we would wanna do. What kind of project are we looking at? Um, if we wanna do more of like a gap, um, asking for funds so we can do some gap financing for those developers. Um, now, cause housing costs about three to four hundred thousand, houses are selling for about two hundred. Now, trying to figure out if that's the way to go, or looking at if we want to do more townhomes, um, or if apartments are the way to go, so just trying to figure out which, which is our best route for now, so still working on that, lots of discussions. Um, I'm just trying to figure out our best, our best path forward for now. These are some big things.
Maybe just kind of piggybacking off of that housing discussion, you know, we're talking about some of these distressed properties we have. I know we've identified some. Could you just maybe give us an update on where we're at with that? I mean, is it still kind of in progress?
Still in progress. I am gonna meet with Joe, um, later this week to talk about a lot of different little things I, I have into him. So, um, that's one of them, on kind of where we, where we can go with it. I did give, um, a lot of the list to the building inspector, so they can kind of go and identify, um, certain of them to see if they are ones that are uninhabitable or if it's just us looking at them a certain way, um, so they still have that list, too.
Okay. Well, I know as I drive around, I see a lot of long lawns, and I'm sure we're trying to keep up with that. And I don't know if we have this no-mow-me. Is that still a thing? I mean, okay.
I mean, I don't, it's a thing. I don't know if it's.
That's not a thing, that's not a thing for the city.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct. So we've sent out quite a few letters, so the process, the process is that, um, Russell will out and look, uh, figure out those who are over six inches, go and, um, give us a list of addresses. We send out letters. They have ten days to mail, and then we go and roll. So, um, yeah, no, a lot of letters were sent out.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good to know. I, I just assumed as much, but I just thought maybe you could give us an update.
He's gonna do another peruse of town this week.
Okay.
Then there would be more letters.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Any, uh, questions, uh, for the city manager on our newsletter or anything else? Hearing none, we shall move on to board updates. Um, I guess I could just give a quick update on the, the tree planting. Uh, I thought it went very well. That was last Thursday. We had a very good turnout. A lot of people came. We planted, what, twenty-three trees, Jay?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. And we.
Seventy people.
Yeah.
Signed up. And thank you for coming, Mayor.
Yes, I, I, it was, it went really well. I was the water boy. I hauled water around. I didn't carry the buckets by hand. I threw them in the back of my truck. I'm smarter than that. But yeah, we had to haul five-gallon bucket. Each tree, newly planted tree took twenty to twenty-five gallons of water, so you can imagine how many buckets that was, so. But it went well. I mean, we had a good, good turnout, and now we just gotta sit back and watch them grow. Well, a little work, more to it than that, probably, but. Any other things from the council that you'd like to share in any of the boards, John? Hearing none, is there any other business to come before the council? Hearing none.